Keep them under. Move the bed and stuff hanging out. You're kicked off the island.
That's a sick word over there. Good evening, I'd like to call this Tuesday, December twentieth, two thousand sixteen, meeting of Middletown City Council to order. Please stand and join me in a moment meditation and the pledge allegiance to the flag.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Gank, would you call the roll please?
Ms. Bronston.
Here.
Mr. Bohannon.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Here.
Mr. Picard.
Here.
Mayor Mulligan.
Here.
All right, first on our agenda, we have a couple of presentations this evening. I'd like to invite our representatives from Dempster Tire Down to celebrate their seventy-fifth anniversary. It's always an honor to be able to recognize some of our longstanding businesses here in town and Dempster Tire celebrating their seventy-fifth anniversary this year. So on behalf of City Council, we have this proclamation to present. Whereas Dempster Tire Pros got its start in nineteen forty-two as Russ Dempster's General Tire Sales and for the past seventy-five years Dempster Tire has been Middletown, Ohio's destination choice of choice for tires. Family owned and operated for three generations Dempster Tire Pros are the premier tire dealer in the area. Along with a full stock of major brands, they also provide the finest service and repair around. And whereas serving the Middletown, Ohio area Dempster Tire Pros have been providing unmatched service and has earned a reputation of providing a comfortable environment that is customer centered to ensure that their customers' expectations are always exceeded. And whereas Dempster Tire Pros continue to expand operations into new markets and develop plans on how to make current operations more efficient to give customers the best value. The city of Middletown is grateful. The Dempster Tire family chose to locate, keep, and grow Dempster Tire Pros in Middletown. Now therefore, Lawrence Mulligan, Mayor of the City of Middletown, County of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, on behalf of all of City Council, do congratulate the Dempster Tire Pros on their seventy-fifth anniversary and hereby proclaim December twentieth, two thousand sixteen, as a day fitting to celebrate Dempster Prior To- Prior, eh, can't get that out. Dempster Tire Pros seventy-fifth anniversary, congratulations. Here's to another seventy-five years in Middletown and all the great things, so.
Thank you very much, sorry. I really don't have anything prepared for this, but I just want to tell you to appreciate the recognition. I'm real happy that we are still here and my son Richie, who was supposed to be here with me, as of migraine headache couldn't be here, but he's doing a wonderful job of continuing it on and Steve Badishill's been with me for thirty years and without him, I don't know, he's just irreplaceable. Steve?
Just wanted to say, being in Middletown that many years, there's just so many friends I have from working at Dempster Tire. I see them at the store, I see them at the park and I'm proud to actually walk up to them and say, hey, how's those tires, how's your car? I just want to let you know that we're so thankful to have a business that's been around that long because it kind of feels like to show cheers. People walking in the door, I know their first name, many of you here are customers and it's so nice to be able to have that friendly face and it's more than just a tire store. We actually listen, people will have devastating things in their life and sometimes they just want to have somebody to listen and so it's been cool to invest in just not tires, you know, once you change forty or fifty thousand tires, it's not that, it's the people that we've invested in, the community, that we really appreciate and so I appreciate the honor and the privilege to come here and receive this, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. The next one I have to present is to the Community Foundation, like to invite Dwayne Gordon now, so Dwayne come in. Mr. Isroff's going to join us too, all right, I saw your name, you can have the card later this evening. It's again, honored to recognize Community Foundation, not quite on seventy-five years, but on forty years of their, their operations here in Middletown and all the great things they've done. So on behalf of City Council, we have this proclamation to present. Whereas every community requires a strong foundation, a foundation of knowledge, a foundation of caring, a foundation of permanence. The Middletown Community Foundation was created nineteen seventy-six as a fund of the United Way and became an independent entity in nineteen eighty-six, following a fundraising campaign headed by Bill Verity in which Elliot Levy challenged the community to raise two million dollars and he would give it one million dollars. The community responded enthusiastically, allowing the campaign to raise significantly more than its goal and to provide so solid footing for growth into the future. And whereas Community Foundation serves as a permanent source of funding for the nonprofit sector in the greater Middletown area, including Middletown, Franklin, Monroe, and Trenton, in addition to Lemon and Madison Townships. The Middletown Community Foundation annually awards educational scholarships of nearly one million dollars to area students to continue their education and provides aid to local food pantries, supports the communities performing arts, funds handicap accessible equipment in area parks, facilitates literacy programs for preschool children, and funds public art such as mural and statues. The Middletown Community Foundation utilizes visionary, diverse, and inclusive philanthropy to serve as a catalyst for making Middletown a better place to live. And whereas every community requires a strong foundation and for the past forty years Community Foundation has been enriching the lives of area residents through a variety of programs that strengthen our community and build a better tomorrow along with, better tomorrow using Middletown's strong foundation, since where did I get my reading glasses, my wife is shooting me here, but it's a light in here, how about that, I'll blow that. So therefore, I, Lawrence Mulligan, Mayor of the City of Middletown, County of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, congratulate the Middletown Community Foundation on their anniversary and hereby proclaim December twentieth, two thousand sixteen, as a day fitting to celebrate the Middletown Community Foundation, congratulations, Dwayne. Mr. Isroff.
Mr. Mayor, Council, we appreciate this recognition. The Foundation, over the past thirty years, that since we separated from United Way, has actually distributed over forty-three million dollars in grants and scholarships for our community to help it be a better place. Over the past nine years, we have distributed almost two hundred thousand books to local preschoolers to help get them ready for kindergarten and now through our Ready Initiative, we have committed five million dollars over the next five years to help ensure that the next generation of kids enters school prepared for the current environment and the twenty-first century. So we're here to help make our community stronger, better, and ready for the future and we thank you for your partnership.
Thank you. All right, now moving on to citizens' comments, I've received a card from Mr. Isroff. If we could get your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Isroff, seven oh seven five Middlemore Lane, Middletown, Ohio. Mr. Council, Mr. City Manager, I want to thank you for the opportunity this afternoon to have our presentation. Central Connection supports the quality of life issues for Middletown. We realize right now that the rapidly growing area is seniors, aging people and baby boomers will soon have us over sixteen to twenty percent of the population. We have been able to provide great service to our community through ability to have, provide a facility that enables people to have a safe haven, place where they can have activities, healthy meals, and through our six solid elements of healthy living, we provided you a little bit of documentation this evening, showing you that we are serving over a hundred and twenty-five thousand home delivered meals. We're doing over thirteen thousand trips into homes, bringing people to doctors and other critical elements in their lives and we're also independently encourage them to have social independence. Many of these people would not be able to be independent living if it were not for the services we provide. Why are we coming today? On the back of this piece of paper, we show you that when we had, I came to you five years ago, we had a certain income flow that we predicted was going to happen. Unfortunately, through the county, we've lost over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of annual income. That four hundred and fifty thousand dollars prevents us from being able to complete our goal, which was to pay off our mortgage. So today, we're coming to you not for anything new, but just to help us renew the levy that will enable us to support our seniors and their quality of life. This levy will take us out of debt, pay off our mortgage, and do something that everybody needs when you have a major facility, which is create a sinking fund for future security of our building. So what we'd like today is just to ask you to let the citizens of Middletown make that decision and ask you to let us put this on the ballot and let us find out where the citizens stand and how they feel about our senior citizens organization. Central Connection, its new name reflects the fact that baby boomers are coming in, some of you might be approaching that, hell, you don't have a way to go yet. Anyway, all I can ask today then is that request, please, would you please let us put this on the ballot? If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to entertain those. Yes, Lord.
Question, Mr. Isroff, what's the balance on the mortgage there?
About a million, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
And who is the mortgage with?
First financial.
And I see you've broken out nicely the, the percentage of Middletown zip codes in here, so it's going to be Middletown residents that would be supporting this and have been supporting it. As we know, there's Liberty in there, there's West Middletown in there in Madison, do we actually have any numbers as to how many true Middletown residents or is that just not perhaps the way your data's broken up?
Well, you could use your math, we have nine hundred and fifty-eight members, but where the seventy-three percent represent, that's seventy-three percent of our members, so you could basically, that's, you could do that, that'd be basically almost seven hundred and twenty people if I'm not using a calculator, old math, okay? And the, the home delivered meals are mostly all in Middletown. The home delivered meals do not go into Franklin, Trenton, or Monroe, so all the home delivered meals are in, the hundred and twenty-five thousand home delivered meals are all in Middletown. We have a little that fall over into Warren County, that little piece of Middletown that's Warren County, but you're aware of where that is.
I have one other question. Why was the mortgage not paid off, is that because of the decreased?
Well, we didn't have, we didn't raise, we, we did not raise enough money for the first levy to pay off the mortgage. We thought with the continuing income that we had with the additional four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we would have been able to sustain our, our existence. With this, with this, at this time paying off the mortgage, we'll be able to sustain ourselves and have a little bit of a sinking fund. We do not see ourselves coming back again, we'll be, we'll have, we are very astutely managing down our expenses, our very good director Monica Smith is really working diligently, our new head chef is providing better meals, we're, we're really cranking down every expense that we can along the way, so we'll be self-sustaining after this, with this renewal.
And that, that, quite frankly, that is one of my concerns because the governor's already come out and said that this is going to be another lean budget, you know, there's probably going to be more cuts and if that were to impact these revenues, I have some reservations, we're going to be having the same conversation in five years.
You have a crystal ball?
Yeah, I don't, no.
I can't, I can't do that, I can tell you that through due diligence, good management, and good preventive maintenance, which we'll be able to do, that we believe that we'll be able to sustain the, the services that we're providing to Middletown and we realize we're, we'll be facing a growing demand for those services. It also helps prevent pressure on other community facilities, if we were not doing this, you would have a lot of pressure on other areas in the community to, this is the only hot meal some of these people get in a day, sometimes that's the only human contact they get is a driver that actually delivers these meals.
Anything else, Mr. Isroff? All right, thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity.
All right, that brings to our City Manager reports, Mr. Atkins.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. After two meetings, we are now back recording our City Council meeting starting tonight. These are the new cameras, the new microphones, and we will have something on YouTube tomorrow, we're training on the equipment to speak and so we will have a video, I'm not sure exactly as we learn how to use the equipment, it might be a little more technically savvy as we get further down the road, but you will have a video on YouTube for this meeting, for the first time in three meetings. On the senior citizen levy, there are a few things and I need to address. My understanding is they are wishing to put this on the May ballot. If that is the case, I've had some preliminary discussions with Les that I will have to pin down a little more depending on your action. My understanding of the process is we have to do a resolution of necessity or an ordinance of necessity, which has to be sent to the county, the county has to do some work, send it back, and then you would have to allow it to go on the ballot all before, somewhere in very early February, which means we would have to come out in January third with that first resolution, emergency. Hope we get it back in time, have a second emergency legislation on the second January meeting to try to get everything in there on time. I have questions whether or not we can make that, I also have questions as to the cost of doing that. If, if you want to do that, my recommendation would be that the senior citizens pick up the, our legal costs in preparing that, we will have to get outside council to help us put all that together, it's not something we normally do on a daily basis. So if you are going to do this for the May ballot, which is my understanding of their, of their ask of you, I will need a decision tonight that you want us to start the process of getting that first resolution together for the January third meeting by emergency.
Do you know what those costs would be? Do you have a rough guess?
And I apologize, I do not have a strong idea, I can certainly get that with, shortly with Les, you know, with, by, before the end of the week, we could have that information for the senior citizens as to what we believe those costs would be. I know we've done other things, cost to do the first one would probably be a pretty good indication of what we would do this time, I think we can get that number fairly quickly, but this is something that can't sit, you can't sit and think about if you're going to get on the May ballot. If we go towards November, we'll have to go back again and see what the process is and the dates are, I think they are hoping for May, is that correct, Mr. Isroff? And so we will have to make a decision tonight on the fly for me to be able to get that ready to go.
Can we get, oh, excuse me, can we get a commitment from them to?
Okay, just trying to make sure everybody's on the same page. But we've also talked a little bit about being the highest effective tax rate for property taxes in Ohio. Not saying that sway your decision either way, other than the levy falling off does help us in that manner, so. Services versus property taxes, it's, it's one of those situations, I'm not sure there's a right answer, it's more the, the view of council and how they would like to move forward.
Both, both options. Seem to be not, not great options, I'll, I'll say here what I said when, when we met privately, that, you know, whether this council decides to put it on the ballot or not, you know, in our economic system, people vote every day with the nonprofits they give to and the dollars where they spend their dollars. And that, you know, that needs to be a major factor in how you're going to formulate your business plan so that hopefully it, it's not dependent upon a levy to go forward, you know, we want you to survive, you guys do amazing work, the best way to do that is to gear your business model so that, you know, it's, it's more of a self-funding operation, which I know is, is the end goal.
Why are we under pressure to make a decision to put this on the May ballot versus another?
You do six, you have a six month gap of no funding.
Okay.
Between May and November, and then when they kick in, there would be a six month gap where none of that funding would be available.
Well, it's just such a last minute thing, why weren't we prepared sooner?
The, the timing, Les and I have just talked about in the last couple of days whether or not it was even possible to try to do this and so this is. This is where we're at and I can certainly nail down some more, but this is what I have as of this meeting, this is all the information I have, I don't have any more to give you to be able to help you make a better decision. Other thoughts from council on letting levy renewal forth?
When this levy first came up five years ago, I was in favor of letting the citizens decide it and that's the position I've always had on this council. Citizens get to make decisions about certain things and this is one of those things that they can decide, it directly impacts them, if they want to spend the money to fund them, they will, if they're not, they won't. And I think as a council, we have a duty to at least let them decide, so I would be in favor of moving forward.
Any other thoughts or?
Would you like that in the form of a, of a motion, Mr. Atkins?
Yeah, with, with council's pleasure, I guess my motion would, would be something to the effect of authorizing me to move forward with that first piece of legislation on January third so that we keep the process moving. Between now and January third, we'll gather that information up on, on the timing, the cost, the things that would go into that, but if, by allowing me to at least go that first step, if you get to January third and you've changed your mind or with the information I provided, you could come back and say, now that I've seen this, you could vote down the January third resolution again and stop it. But this would allow me to at least get it ready for January third, so if, if there's any hope of making the deadline, I can, I can keep us on that path.
This would just be an authorization to allow you to do the research, not necessarily indicate a supporter against it either way.
And, and prepare a, a motion, what do they call it?
Resolution or?
Resolution of need.
Necessity or something like that, yeah, so.
A necessity, is that the right word? Resolution of necessity, for your consideration at the January third meeting.
And so that would allow us a couple of weeks of our holidays to get some additional information as well as perspectives on this, so.
Will council be comfortable with me moving at least that far?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, entertain that as a motion, is that a?
Make motion that we.
Okay.
For Mr. Atkins.
Authorizing Mr. Atkins to move forward and research, okay? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
We will get that resolution prepared, we'll get the costs together, we'll share everything with not only the council, but also with senior citizens center so that we're all making sure we see the same information and we'll bring this back on January third with that first step. Again, I've got a fair amount to get through tonight, we had talked about a couple of other options before of doing a couple of presentations that with the equip, video equipment down, I wasn't able to do, so I will try to move through those as quickly as possible. Yeah, I've got it, don't I? Left one? There we go. First one is ordinance twenty sixteen fifty-nine, you had previously passed an ordinance amending ten forty oh three of the codified ordinances assessing sewer rates for twenty seventeen. This will increase sewer rates in the city by fifteen percent starting January first. There was a question about what this would do to the average person's bill, the fifteen percent rate increase will cost a typical customer an additional three eighty-four a month based on six hundred cubic feet of use. If you recall in twenty fifteen, those of you who are on council, we had set up a ten percent surcharge for any increase in services or in rates rather, that would allow us to start building an infrastructure capital account to be used for the long-term control plan. For the typical user, that would be another thirty-eight cents a month, if you calculate that out, it would be four dollars and twenty-two cents a month for twelve months, it'll be an approximately fifty dollars and sixty-four cents a year on a usage of six hundred cubic feet. We do have two point two seven million dollars projected in capital expenses for the sewer fund for this year. We will be transferring about one million three from the sewer fund over to the capital fund to complete those projects. They include facility upgrades, beginning things on the long-term control plan, even though that plan is not finalized, there are pieces of it that we would do regardless of whether the EPA requires us or not, we will start work on some of those, system replacement programs, replacement meters, and our GIS system upgrade. Those are already on the budget, you've already passed those for next year. Majority of our future revenues will fund capital regardless of whether the increase in rates is charged to the base sewer rates or the infrastructure surcharge. This is a change from the way we have operated in the past, in the past, over the last thirty years, we would take an increase in funds, we would all go into the sewer fund and then each year we would apportion some of it over for capital projects. What's going to happen in the future is the long-term control plan comes into its final form and we've got those upgrades to the system, upgrades to our plants, is, in the operational costs are only going to go up about three percent a year, it's what they've done historically, which means that most of the increases that we're going to be doing in the future will all be going towards capital. With that in mind, our old system is, it works, but it's not as transparent as I think we can be in the future and so one of the things we're going to be looking at in twenty seventeen is a way that we can change the way we collect money and put it in funds so that it better reflects, if we give you a fifteen percent increase, you know, it's going to reflect that, three percent of that increase is going into the, into the operating and the rest of it's going into capital. And if you pull up our open gov and all that, it'll, it'll look cleaner instead of a bunch of stuff sitting here and we keep moving it back and forth. The idea is since we're changing the way we're doing business over the next twenty years or so, let's change the way we, we recognize this and book those funds in a way that makes it easier for the public to understand what we're doing moving forward. So we will be working on that in seventeen and as we probably get to the eighteen budget, you'll see some changes in the way we recommend laying all that out so that it makes more sense moving forward. Our second one was ordinance twenty sixteen dash sixty, that was the ordinance that increased the solid waste fees from fourteen twenty-five a month to fifteen dollars a month effective January first of twenty seventeen. We had some costs in twenty sixteen which you allowed us to pay and then some increased costs in next year that we have included in this. The revenues projected from the fifteen dollars a month will come out to three point two four million dollars in twenty seventeen. You can see the expenses are going to be about three point three million and the fund balance will actually, even with the increase, go down a little bit as we go on. The rates in front of you and on the screen here reflect the increase, additional three hundred thousand in costs of sixteen plus the twenty seventeen expenditures and it also, the revenue numbers include the rate increase up to fifteen dollars a month. I will say if the EPA does add on to our landfill requirements as they did at the end of this year, there's a chance that there's a possibility that we may have to ask for another rate increase in twenty eighteen. We don't have any reason to have, do that right now, we don't have anybody asking us to do that, but they are asking us to do some remedial work out at the landfill if that continues, expands, changes, we may have to come back to you in twenty eighteen if they add to those obligations. There's the, for the solid waste fund, the expenditures budgeted that you've already passed for this year, I will let you know that one of your other items today talks about our healthcare fund and one of the changes we are going to be looking at making is delaying the new positions for twenty seventeen to help pay for our healthcare costs. So the personnel services, half of the animal control officer. Uh, so the personnel services, half of the animal control officer, that will, may or may not go forward depending on how we go on our healthcare. Uh, the van, uh, if we get it, right now we're going to look at doing that in June, uh, as opposed to January. Uh, so we may or may not buy that van depending again on how revenues are going in twenty seventeen. But the capital outlay, uh, for refuse collection and the other methane gas at the landfill, EPA requirements, that will go on regardless. And again, uh, even with the increase, you're looking at about a seventy thousand dollar, uh, reduction in that fund balance between the end of this year protections and the end of next year with the increased costs. Uh, before you tonight is resolution R twenty sixteen dash fifty-five. I'll bring a transfer of one point two five million dollars from the general fund to the employee benefits fund as an advance subject to reimbursement. I'll spend about five minutes going over this. We are self-insured, which means we pay for our own healthcare expenses during the recession. Uh, the decision was made as part of the budget to save jobs by not increasing funds to, uh, the employee benefit fund. With the exception of twenty thirteen, uh, we kept our spending flat on healthcare, which means even though healthcare costs were going up six, eight, ten percent, we did not increase the amount of money we were spending on healthcare, uh, which saved some jobs during the recession. This worked fine when we had low, when we had low claims years, and at the end of fourteen, we had a positive balance of one point two million dollars in that fund. We had paid all our claims, had over a million dollars sitting there. Uh, it worked for a while. Twenty fifteen, the world changed. Uh, we saw dramatic increases in healthcare claims from our covered employees. Uh, because we are a smaller group, uh, we have volatility. We have up years, we have down years. Uh, and we've, we viewed twenty fifteen as a high claim year balancing out several low claim years. We assumed it was a blip in the radar. The city borrowed last year seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the general fund, and we had adjusted the healthcare plans and premiums with the idea that the savings that we would make in the changes of twenty sixteen would be able to pay back that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and still keep our healthcare under control. Twenty sixteen comes, and the claims have substantially increased over twenty fifteen levels. Uh, we have seen multiple cancer claims, premature babies, and si, new serious chronic conditions in twenty sixteen, uh, that we simply have not seen in the last ten, fifteen years. Uh, the good news is that our employees and their families were covered during catastrophic times. Uh, we've had some horrible things that have happened, and this is why catastrophic healthcare is there, to make sure that you don't wipe out a family. Uh, the bad news ever is not only have we not been able to pay back the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we borrowed in twenty fifteen, you now need another one point two five million dollars to end the year zero in the healthcare fund, which means we are two million dollars in the hole. So, we have spent a fair amount of time working on this. Your twenty seventeen budget, which was passed, uh, in November, now assumes that twenty sixteen, the high claims in twenty sixteen is the new normal. Uh, we assume that we're going to continue at this level. The healthcare committee has reduced coverage and increased premiums to generate about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenues over expenses by year end to start paying back on the general fund. Uh, Dave Van Arsdale, if you've not heard, has, will be retiring on January sixth as the public safety director. We will, uh, come back to you with, in January and, uh, deappropriate his expenses for a hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred to again charge back against his two million dollar, uh, deficit. Uh, as a one-time cost savings measure, we have talked to the garage and the various departments. We will deappropriate two hundred thousand dollars in garage charges in the twenty seventeen budget. That's something we can do one time without, uh, hurting us sh, uh, short-term and credit the savings back against the employee benefit fund loan. Uh, I am putting a hold on all of the new positions that we had budgeted for twenty seventeen until at least June thirtieth. Uh, that would generate another hundred and twenty thousand that again can be deappropriated and sent back against this two million dollar deficit. If you add all of those together, that brings us about six hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, uh, towards repayment of that two million dollar loan. In twenty seventeen, uh, I've already talked to department heads. Our policy will be any turned-over position will remain vacant for ninety days. Uh, I reserve the right respectfully to not do that. If there's something that's critical, if we're, you know, if we're going to turn on water and the water's not going to come out of the faucet, I'm going to hire somebody. But as a rule, uh, I will let all of those sit for ninety days, and as those positions turn, we'll let them sit. We'll run a little bit of overtime if we have to, and we'll credit the balance back against this loan. I do not have an idea how much that'll be. We generally turn twenty or thirty people a year, uh, but it would depend on when they turn, how many, and how, what positions they're in, in the pay scale. Uh, we have one claim that we believe was, uh, d, paid inappropriately to the tune of four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we are in the process of appealing that through Anthem. There's a three-step review process. We have been through the first review process, and they agree with us that it is probably an inappropriate charge. We are in the second, uh, piece of that approval process as we go. There will then be a third one, a final review. Uh, if that is the case, and we believe it to be the case, and EBI, our broker, uh, also believes it to be the case, uh, somewhere during early, first half of seven, twenty seventeen, we would have four hundred thousand dollars coming back, uh, to reimburse us for that inappropriate charge. Uh, and finally, of course, if claims go to a more historical level as opposed to the twenty sixteen levels, uh, you'll see, we budgeted as if they're going to continue horrible. If they don't, we'll get, recognize those savings as well. We obviously don't know what those will be until twenty seventeen. If you add those all together, uh, you're guaranteed about four hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred. Uh, we believe you'll see another five hundred and fifty, but those are not guaranteed. Uh, which means theoretically by the end of, uh, twenty seventeen, we can return a million dollars of the two million dollars that has been loaned so far. I will report quarterly to council, uh, where we are, where claims are, where the employee benefit fund is, and the loan repayment stand, uh, so we don't let this get far away, uh, during twenty seventeen. Uh, in June, I will probably come back based on wherever we are and talk about what do we want to do with our new positions that are in the budget. Uh, if we're in good shape and things are on pace, I'll ask you if you want to go ahead and fire, you know, hire them. Uh, we did want to keep the health department open. We did want to get an animal control officer. We have some things we wanted to do in twenty seventeen, and if we're going a path that council's comfortable with, we may ask you in June, do you want to bring those people on for the second half of the year? If things are at all not where we think they're going to be, we will probably discontinue those for the second half of the year and ask again at the end of twenty seventeen, do we want to look at them for twenty eighteen? Uh, if claims get higher, or if this, other pieces of this plan do not work, uh, we can abandon the new positions completely for twenty seventeen, and we can actually look at a mid-year change in our healthcare plan. I mean, we can talk about changes in premiums. We are have collecting and bargaining agreements with, uh, caps on their, on their expenses. We're going to have to take a look at those. There are things, but there are things that we can do, uh, all the way up to laying people off to force this to go back to where it needs to go. This is the best plan we could put together for you tonight. Uh, that, the, the other piece of this is, this is a longer-term problem. Uh, paying your two million dollars back gets you to zero. It doesn't reimburse the fund back up to where it's healthy again. So, this is something over the next several years, we're going to have to make some very significant changes in our healthcare plan and our claims and see where things are going. Uh, this is going to take two, three, four years of careful, uh, management to get us back to a place where our reserves are back up to a level to keep us from getting in this position again. So, this is what's in front of you tonight, one point two five million dollars to get us back to zero. Uh, we can always get more aggressive. It means probably laying people off, uh, if you want to get done faster than that. I will, of course, do whatever the majority of council wants. I tried to give you the most balanced way to approach this that I could do and keep operations going. So this is what we have in front of us. And the last thing after that fun, uh, I will tell you that the new firemen, uh, who are on the Safer Grant have, are completing their training this week. Their badge penning will be Thursday at the Fox Headquarters at eleven AM, uh, if any of you are available. Uh, we would love to have you join us. Uh, there's going to be cake and, you know, congratulations for the new firemen on the Safer Grant. And we have, I, you can answer, ask me questions now about health. We can, when it comes up, whatever would be, yeah, best for council. I'm happy to.
All right, any, any questions, Mr. Atkins, uh, on his reports here right now? All right, thank you. Uh, with that, we can move to, uh, our consent agenda. Ms. Gank?
Your consideration this evening, we have the approval of the city council minutes from December sixth, two thousand sixteen. To receive and file boarding commission minutes from the board of health from October eleventh and November eighth, two thousand sixteen, and airport commission minutes from July twenty-first, August eighteenth, and September fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. To confirm board and commission appointments of the airport commission, Tom Wortley, John Langhorn, Nicholas Brown, building and housing board of appeals, Mike Taylor, city income tax review board, Myron Friedman, historic commission, Fred Sauer, Matt Dixon, Jeremy Lukinas, Glenn Roger Daniel, library trustees, Frankie Carlson, cemetery board, Charlene Kenny Akles, Deb Morrison, and Belinda Cox, planning commission, Paul Ninni and John Langhorn, board of zoning appeals, Todd Moore and Glenn Roger Daniel, citizens advisory board to the police, Paul Gomia. To receive and file oaths of office for Seth Adams, William Banks, Zachary Hardisty, Jeffrey Hobbs Junior, Michael Jones, Adam Stit singer, Jacob Smith, Alex Wargo, Terrence Sellers. To confirm the exceptional appointment of Allison Manning to the position of ground maintenance supervisor, department of public works and utilities, division of ground maintenance. To approve the reclassification of Lance Barker, treatment plant maintenance supervisor, rank one eighty-two, step G. Nusun Chan, assistant information systems director, range one seventy-five, step G. To confirm the appointment of Rachel Combs to the position of human resources specialist, department of law, division of human resources, and to confirm the commission of Kirsten Zimmerman as a special police officer.
All right, thank you. Uh, do we have a, a motion for the approval of the issues and actions as listed on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
And we have one motion item this evening?
To approve the sale of a city-owned vacant lot located at five eleven Moore Street to Jonathan and Amber Scott.
Mr. Atkins, anything to add to the staff report?
Uh, no, your honor, this was demolished in twenty thirteen. Uh, the Scots live next door at five fifteen Moore Street and would like to add to their side yard. Uh, we would, five hundred, uh, under the Moe-to-oh program. They have been maintaining it for over a year, so we would execute paperwork for the five hundred dollars in mowing and turn the title over to them.
Okay. Any questions from council?
I just want to make sure they don't park vehicles in there, because I own a house nearby, and they park vehicles in that grassy lot, so I just want to make sure they don't do that as, once they own it.
It's probably worth writing into the contract in some way in future, in future lots. It's a good idea.
All right, uh, very good. Then I'll turn a, entertain a motion for the approval of the sale of a city-owned lot, uh, vacant lot located at five eleven Moore Street to Jonathan and Amber Scott.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms., uh, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, that brings us to council comments. Start this evening with, uh, Mr. Picard.
Thank you, mayor. Just like to take a moment to wish everybody a happy Hanukkah and a very merry Christmas, and, uh, encourage all of you to spend time with your family.
Thank you. Mr. Bohannon?
And as well, I'd like to wish everybody happy holidays and merry Christmas and, uh, happy new year.
Thank you. Mr. Moon?
Same here. Uh, merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy new year. Uh, and at the end of my first year, I, I want to thank city staff and Mr. Atkins for, for the great job that you all do and council, my colleagues. It's been wonderful to get you, get to know you as, as individuals and to serve with you. Uh, and finally, I just wanted to tell the folks that may be watching at home to check out, uh, Chief Muter, Muter Spa's, uh, Facebook post today. It does a nice recap of all that the police department has done. Um, what a great chief. We're lucky to have him. I wouldn't trade him for anybody else in the state. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Bronston?
Ditto. Uh, merry Christmas, happy new year, happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa. And, uh, I agree with Tal, with Mr. Moon, that, uh, we do have a, a great working, um, group of five council members and our city manager, and of course, the ladies that help us from the law department. I think we have a great staff that supports us. So, uh, I think that ends this, uh, year, two thousand sixteen, with a happy note from council.
Thank you. I'll extend my greetings as well for a very happy holiday season to everyone. Uh, it's a great time to pause and reflect of the great things we have going on here in Middletown. Certainly, we have some challenges at times, but, uh, we work through those, and, uh, a lot of opportunity ahead of us, so, uh, we're in a fortunate, fortunate position. Uh, but certainly, uh, want to have a lot to look forward to in, uh, two thousand seventeen, so, and we'll keep Mr. Atkins very busy on that front. And with that, uh, we can move to our legislation this evening. Ms. Fox?
Thank you, Mayor Mulligan. There are fifteen items of legislation on tonight's agenda with eleven items which are emergency legislation. We will need a motion to waive the charter provision requiring two separate readings as to the following ordinances. First is resolution number R twenty sixteen dash fifty-two. Second is ordinance number O twenty sixteen dash seventy-four. Third is ordinance number O twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen dash seventy-five. Fourth is ordinance number O twenty sixteen dash seventy-six. Fifth is ordinance number O twenty sixteen dash seventy-seven. Sixth is ordinance number O twenty sixteen dash seventy-eight. Seventh is ordinance number O twenty sixteen dash seventy-nine. Eighth is resolution number R twenty sixteen dash fifty-five. Ninth is resolution number R twenty sixteen dash fifty-six. Tenth is resolution number R twenty sixteen dash fifty-seven, and lastly is resolution number R twenty sixteen dash fifty-eight.
Mayor, I make a motion to, um, suspend the charter that requires reading on two separate dates for the above-mentioned ordinances and resolutions and, uh, declare them emergency measures to be read one time only.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
First up, we have resolution number R twenty sixteen dash fifty-two. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement granting tax abatement to Mark and Tracy Barnett for redevelopment of Soreng Mansion located at two hundred through two hundred and six South Main Street in the downtown Middletown community reinvestment area and declaring an emergency.
Can we motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Atkins, anything to add?
No, your honor. This is, uh, presented at the last meeting and is ready for your action tonight.
All right, thank you. Any other ca, questions or coun, or comments from council? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Next up, we have resolution number R twenty sixteen dash fifty-four. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement granting tax abatement to Simon Ciari Carp Ten Twelve LLC and O'Reilly Auto Parts. This is for redevelopment of eighteen eleven through eighteen thirty-five Central Avenue in the downtown Middletown community reinvestment area. This is the second reading. There was a previous presentation and is ready for action.
Okay, do we have motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Next up is ordinance number O twenty sixteen dash seventy-two. This is an ordinance to levy special assessments for the repair of concrete sidewalks and driveway brims along Central Avenue between University Boulevard and Braille Boulevard in the city of Middletown against the lots and lands benefited by said improvements. This is the second reading and is ready for action.
Okay, do we motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second, thank you. Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
I abstain.
Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Ordinance number O twenty sixteen dash seventy-three. This is an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Lake County Board of Commissioners. This is in regards to the health plan. This is the second reading and is ready for action.
Okay, do we motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Ordinance number O twenty sixteen dash seventy-four. An ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a second amendment to the contract with Butler County Regional Transit Authority and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second, okay, thank you. Mr. Atkins, anything to add?
Uh, no, your honor. This is for the five transit buses that we now have on the street. Uh, there was, we had originally budgeted two point two million dollars, uh, with ECRTA, ECRTA to get that done. Uh, the manufacturer was able to do a little bit of the graphics work, uh, that we would have paid for in other places, but we do need to reimburse BCRTA for the thirty-four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Regional Transit Authority and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we motion adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Uh, any, any discussion or comments? I know we had a number of discussions on this as well. All right, Ms. Skank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Ordinance Number O two thousand sixteen dash seventy-seven, an ordinance authorizing a grant agreement with Middletown Moving Forward and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we motion adopt?
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Atkins, anything to add from the?
Just a little bit, Your Honor. I do want to add, as you're aware, Mr. Landon had sent out a thirty-client privileged memo on this that I hope you've had a chance to look at. We've also had further discussions with our Ohio Development Services Agency rep on our grant. They are requesting an additional six months to get that done. The grant cannot be closed until we get a covenant not to sue on the property. Uh, we, right now, cannot estimate the date that we will have that. We are continuing with the next step, which is our January fifteenth submission, and we will continue the process. We should fully understand that this is not the final, uh, amendment. This is just the next one for nineteen thousand sixteen, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Atkins? We had a lot of debate and discussion on this last time. Okay, all right. Ms. Skank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ordinance Number O two thousand sixteen dash seventy-six, an ordinance authorizing a collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council, in regards to the police civil employees for the years January first, two thousand seventeen, through January thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we motion adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Uh, any, any discussion or comments? I know we had a number of discussions on this as well. All right, Ms. Skank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Ordinance Number O two thousand sixteen dash seventy-seven, an ordinance authorizing a grant agreement with Middletown Moving Forward and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we motion adopt?
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Atkins, anything to add?
Uh, a little bit, Your Honor. This is a grant agreement with Middletown Moving Forward for the purposes of the Getz Tower redevelopment. It's a three million dollar project downtown with six floors of apartments and a, the ground floors, a commercial space. We have one point eight million dollars in private investment, historic tax credits, and this grant agreement will allow the final provision to go through, allowing us to start construction early next year.
Any questions for Mr. Atkins? Okay, Ms. Skank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Ordinance Number O two thousand sixteen dash seventy-eight, this is an ordinance repealing Resolution R two thousand sixteen dash forty-nine, making, making adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio, for the period ending December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we motion adopt?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Mr. Atkins?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. You recently approved graciously Resolution Number R two thousand sixteen dash forty-nine, uh, which made some changes in the nuisance abatement fund and a supplemental appropriation of the capital improvement fund. Unfortunately, uh, we had a clerical error, and that resolution, instead of fixing the problem, duplicated it. And so now, instead of being at zero, we are two million dollars the wrong way. So we're asking you to repeal this completely. Uh, you do have two resolutions coming, uh, later here in a little bit that will allow us to clean that back up and do it the correct way, uh, but we're asking that, uh, R two thousand sixteen forty-nine be repealed completely.
Okay. All right, Ms. Skank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Ordinance Number O two thousand sixteen dash seventy-nine, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an amendment to the development agreement between the city and Liberty Spirits LLC for the sale of city-owned property located at thirteen sixteen Vale Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we motion adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Atkins?
Your Honor, there's been a fair amount of discussion about this and information provided. Back in April, we had worked out an agreement with Liberty Spirits LLC to take over the Vale building, thirteen sixteen Vale, and improve it. Uh, that had a, uh, end date of December thirty-first, which is coming up in another week and a half. Uh, the has, building has been gutted and had seventy thousand dollars in improvement. It has a new roof, it has new windows and a garage door, uh, and it is under construction, but no way is it anywhere near to be ready by December thirty-first. Uh, Liberty Spirits has entered into a lease agreement with One Market Eatery, uh, for the space at thirteen sixteen. They will provide the food. Mike would provide the liquor, uh, in that new business venture, uh, but they are simply not ready to go at this time. They have asked for an extension of the deadline. They've given you One Market Eatery's, uh, business plan. We've got a timeline on construction, uh, and based on the information that was provided, uh, we have recommended that we extend the date to April fifteenth. They actually intend to be open, uh, by mid-March, but we wanted to make sure they had enough time to get the doors open. They will not be open seven days a week. They're not planning on being open seven days a week. They're going to operate out of the food truck and do some other things while they're getting the rest of the HVAC and plumbing and the hard things finished up. Uh, we have talked a little bit, uh, to different members of counsel. We are recommending that we take the one thousand dollar, uh, deposit that was put down on this, and as part of the, uh, consideration for making an extension, uh, we start taking one hundred dollars a month of that, starting in January first, uh, through April, which would be four hundred dollars, uh, by the, by April. And then if it's not ready to go and they're not open in April, of course, you would default the rest of the thousand dollars. Uh, I know there's some questions from counsel. Uh, we have done what we could to reach everybody's, uh, expectations, both in the ability to bring a new business to Middletown and get it open, uh, and at the same time, uh, recognize that a timeline has not been met, uh, but not sabotaged the project. So, at this point, I've done everything I can to try to talk to, uh, One Market Eatery, Liberty Spirits, and the different members of counsel. This is the best agreement I could come up with that would move us forward and, and try to, uh, reach everybody's, uh, needs.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, do we get our motion on that, Ms. Skank?
Yes, we have first and a second.
That's what I thought, okay. Um, so I'll open it for discussion. I know there were some, uh, concerns expressed by counsel, by email in terms of the amount and stuff like that. Um, you know, my thought is, from a policy perspective, we certainly want to make sure we're, you know, being equitable across a number of different projects. Um, from a policy perspective, if, if we're interested in pursuing some sort of, um, consideration for extensions, uh, that we do this effectively across, uh, all our development agreements, uh, and, and make sure we're equitable about that. Um, you know, I think from a business perspective, when you look at projects like this and other projects that are involved, um, uh, they're not necessarily, uh, easy, nor do they stick to a dedicated timeline. Sometimes, uh, I can relate having an old house. Sometimes you think they're going to be done and easy, and, uh, sometimes they are, many times they're not. Uh, so I was okay proceeding forward. I think a hundred dollars a month is reasonable, but, uh, would certainly open it up for, uh, thoughts or comments from other people on counsel.
Personally, I think, uh, he signed an agreement with the, with the thousand dollars. I think he should lose his thousand dollars. Fining him a hundred dollars a month, that's fine. I just feel that, you know, this way, he's not losing anything, you know. He's already given the money to us, so the hundred dollars a month is nothing out of his pocket anymore. So, I think he should lose his thousand dollars and fine him the hundred dollars or two fifty or something in that range, whatever we can agree upon. But I just think he should lose a thousand dollars.
Other thoughts from counsel?
Uh, my suggestion in response to the emails that have been going around was two hundred and fifty dollars a month for the four months, which would equate to the thousand dollars.
The only thing that would do for you, though, is, at the end, you would already have lost his thousand, and so, again, same thing. But, yeah, there's no further loss if he doesn't make the April date.
Right.
It, it, this is tough, because I need to get enough of you together that I can make this work, and if it doesn't, if it's not going to work, then you're going to have to get enough together to tell me what to do if we're not going to move forward.
Mr. Atkins, from the mechanics of the deal, what certifies completion? I know the, I believe the legislation said there needed to be a certificate of completion. What triggers that? I mean, having a ribbon cutting doesn't necessarily mean a business is ready.
A certificate of occupancy would allow them to open up under certain, you know, be a, a temporary certificate of occupancy and, and an opening, which is what we're looking for. Sorry.
That comes from the city?
Yeah, it would come from the building inspection department.
Would the building have to have water, sewer, HVAC? All those amenities would have to be in place?
It would not, because they're going to have the food truck, and the food truck takes some of that out of there. They would have to have enough that, again, people could occupy the building. Uh, my guess is they'd have to have bathrooms. They'd have to have some kind of heat, if, you know, if it's needed. But some of that, the health side of it, the sinks and all that stuff that they will eventually be putting in, they would, this, the food truck would cover some portion of that that we would have to work out.
Was a thou, excuse me, was a thousand dollars, uh, security, or were we going to get that regardless?
Yeah, we were, that was to be refunded if he, if he met his obligations.
So then, he didn't meet the obligation on December thirty-one?
Again, I can, I can go anywhere the majority of counsel would like to go. Mr. Robinett is here, if we have questions for him. Um, I'm trying to find a way. I didn't want this to get to December thirty-first and not have taken any action. Uh, you know, let's, let's figure out what we're going to do so that we all go forward with the same understanding. Uh, whether we're going to try to take the building back or whatever we're going to do, I'm okay, as long as I understand what my, what the expectations of counsel are for me, what action I'm supposed to take.
I believe the contract said is, is, Mr. Picard just said, it is a deposit that was supposed to be surrendered, if not completed, in time. So I think he should surrender the deposit. And as far as the penalty goes, I'm not saying take the building back. Let him continue on with this project, but he's going to have to pay something until he gets finished, whether it be a hundred dollars or whatever. That's something we can agree on, in my opinion.
In taking the building back, again, that seems to be rather extreme, um, but, I mean, I don't know that we necessarily, the city benefit from that, would we, in terms of?
Well, the other, the other person you've got is, if you take no action tonight, on January third, I would declare him in default, and we would take his thousand dollars. He then has sixty days to cure that fault, which means if he gets things going enough, he can get a temporary certificate of occupancy of some kind, uh, that would meet the contract. We're right back where we are anyway. And so, again, I, I did not want to let this go to, without us all having a discussion about what we want to have happen here. What is our goal? Is our goal to have an operating business there? Is that our first goal? And if so, does, does taking his thousand or taking it at two fifty at a time, or charging him the extra hundred, does that in any way help us with our goal of having a business in there, uh, and holding him accountable? And if the answer is yes, that's fine. But that's, that's the question, is, does the money change the project in any way? Uh, and are we trying, I, I think you could reach a point where he says, never mind, uh, litigation over the seventy thousand dollars of improvements, because now you've got One Market Eatery with money in it, you've got community foundation money in it, uh, you've got Atrium money in it, uh, you've got a real mess to work with, which, again, I'm happy. We, we will sort those out, if that's what counsel wants us to do.
Well, I don't think the, uh, counsel is saying, take the building back. We're happy that the business is there. So I think we can just put that aside, that we agree on that.
Well, the, the challenge I think we're faced with is that we may get the building back if, you know, um, they could, they could walk away from it.
If we declare him in default and he doesn't cure, it reverts to us in sixty days.
Okay. So as of the thirty-first, he loses his deposit. That's in the contract?
That is in the contract.
Okay. So can we agree on, uh, taking the deposit back, uh, because that, the date has not been met, and then agree on how much penalty per month for four months?
Okay.
Can, can we agree on that?
Uh, I, I think there's some question to that. Um, I mean, is there anyone interested in taking the full deposit back? I mean, just to show of hands, is there a thumb up?
Well, before we get to that point, if you declare him in default, he has sixty days to cure. If he cures within the sixty days, he keeps his thousand dollars, correct?
I agree that we don't want to take this building back. I think it's important to move forward with this building. Uh...
I think it's the approach we have in terms of dealing with a, a business, I mean, recognizing there's sometimes some flexibility involved. I mean, if we're going to be hard and fast in this particular case, um, you know, um, I think we need to make sure we're equitable, and I think, um, that can position us sometimes in terms of, you know, we try to be business friendly in terms of working with businesses, uh, whether it's through the planning process, whether it's through the zoning process, whether it's through property acquisition, uh, whatever, um, you know, to have some, some flexibility. And I don't know that that necessarily puts us in the best light. Um, again, working with a small business owner, not, you know, this is not a major corporation we're dealing with that, um, you know, has resources to, uh, to make it happen. Now, admittedly, I think expectations going in were that it would be up and running, and, um, you know, I think we all have, um...
I think this brings a good point in the fact that we shouldn't be owning real, real estate in the city, because this puts us in a heck of a bind every time this comes about, so we can help other people out. And we write contracts that we set down and agreed upon to, for this contract to be written, and it sounds to me like we, it doesn't mean anything, because, just like we just said, he's got thirty, sixty days to make the corrections and everything's good again and so forth. So there's, the contract really doesn't mean anything, and I think he, you know...
I think the contract does exactly what you hoped it would do. It's a thousand dollars. If he fixes it in sixty days, that's exactly what you want. You want him open with the business. It accomplished exactly what you wanted it to do, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Not, you know, sixty days late, but if, if the business gets open, that's, that's what we want in the building. The building gets renovated.
So then, with, with April, with having four months, that's not going to happen. So we're back to the penalty. So are you saying you're agreeable for two hundred and fifty dollars a month then, Steve?
That's, yeah.
If you want to grease on that?
You're saying taking that out of the deposit, pulling it out of the deposit?
Or just making it a penalty. If the deposit is going to be there anyway, just make this a penalty.
But he's going to have to pay out of his own pocket right now.
If I could just add, jump in for just a minute. I, I do think it's probably the proper policy decision, that as the mayor eloquently said, there'd be some consideration for making amendment to the contract. Um, I'd like to see the project go forward. I don't really want to take the building back, as I, I think we all agree on that. Um, I'm, if four of us could get together on it, I, I think Ms. Bronston's first thought of two fifty, if, if you're agreeable, I could be okay with that, as opposed to the hundred if, if, uh...
Me too.
You know.
And is that out of the deposit, or is that?
I would just say two fifty. I wouldn't say the deposit and two fifty. I would just say a penalty.
Just say a penalty.[1644.07]
Since, uh, Mr. Robinett's here, maybe he'd like to offer a few, uh, thoughts or not to put you on the spot too much, but...
Sure.
You know, I can certainly empathize with council's concerns about people living by contracts. Uh, I deal with that all the time in my business. However, you also have to keep in mind that there are a lot of factors that change. Uh, but my bigger concern is not the money or any penalty or anything like that. My bigger concern, quite frankly, is the principle here of singling out one development project that the city has a contract with to act, to re, you know, to penalize them when we all know there's other development contracts that aren't in compliance with the contract and yet nothing's happened. So I feel like I'm being singled out here and I've invested a substantial amount of money in this project downtown. Uh, we've invested a substantial amount of money in the project on Vale Avenue. So if the intent is to try to extract a pound of flesh out of me, you can do that. But if you want to get down to the nitpicky aspects of the contract, which you seem to be interested in doing, Mr. Bohannon, the contract says we would have had deed to the property by April thirtieth. We didn't get the deed till May twenty-seventh. It took ten weeks from the time you authorized a contract that had already been written and was a part of the legislation in March, ten weeks for that to get signed and recorded in the property transfer. So I feel like I've done everything I can do to abide by the agreement. We tried to accommodate another organization that's interested in being downtown, which I thought was good for downtown. That's why I supported it. It caused us to have to change plans, which I was happy to do. Uh, my interest is to try and make downtown as strong as it can be. That's one of the reasons why I'm doing the project at Liberty Spirits. So if you want to single me out, you're welcome to do that. But, uh, the city hasn't abided by the contract in terms of when we were supposed to get control of the project. So, uh, I'm, I agreed, frankly, even though, uh, Mr. Atkins proposed this one hundred dollars a month and then if we weren't done, you took the rest of it. I agreed to it, even though I said in principle, I think it's wrong and it's not fair and that I'm being singled out. But if that is a compromise works for everyone, I'm fine with it. But I'm not, I can't negotiate, uh, with five different council members about these kinds of issues in a public forum. That's really not the way to do it. So I'm happy to abide by what I agreed to with Mr. Atkins and that's all I'm willing to agree to.
Thank you. So we have our motion or second for the, I guess, the contract amendment that, uh, Mr. Atkins negotiated with Mr. Robinett. Any other comments or questions? Call for the vote then. Ms. Gank, would you, uh, call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes, are we voting on the two fifty a month?
No.
As it is, as, as we have it here.
On the one hundred as yes?
As, as Mr. Atkins negotiated with Mr. Robinett, as we have any legislation before us.
No.
Mr. Bohannon?
No.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
All right, the, uh, motion fails to pass as an emergency. Would, uh, council be interested in taking this up as a, uh, first reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I make a comment here?
Sure.
I, I feel put on the spot receiving this today, which was not on our agenda as a, uh, emergency item. And we're here sitting discussing it without really having an opportunity. And the first reading would have been probably more appropriate. But, um, we had to discuss it because it was posed to us this evening.
With a email from Mr. Atkins last week, right?
Question on the first reading. Uh, it would be first reading as, as this.
Right.
Um, seeing as we still have to get to four and we're still not to four yet, and I think we'd all like to move it forward, is there any sense in entertaining Ms. Bronston's suggestion so that we could hopefully keep the project moving?
Mr. Robinett has said he would not take anything other than that, which means he may not be willing to sign that extension.
Well, that's not what he said.
I can't, I can't speak for him other than what he just said.
That's, that's what I heard, was that it was, you know, he was interested in entering the agreement he negotiated with Mr. Atkins. And, uh, I can understand his point of not, I mean, we probably, from a policy perspective, should be looking at penalty versus no penalty or consideration, no consideration, what it should be, and leave the details to the administration. Uh, because each one of us is gonna have different thoughts going into this as to what will be best. We're all, you know, we've all done contracts in the past, um, you know, but again, to have five people try and negotiate it, um, here on the council floor is, is, is a little challenging and, uh, best left to the administration to take care of that.
And I apologize, when I, when I talked to council last week and floated this idea around that the number that first had come back to me was one hundred dollars. And that's why I went to Mr. Robinett with that number. And I apologize if I misunderstood council's intent, but I was trying to get...
I don't think he did too apologize. I don't, I don't think he misunderstood anything. If, uh, in regard to the hundred dollars, I'm sorry, as a point of clarification, I thought I heard that it was a hundred dollars a month and then the thousand...
It's a hundred dollars a month through April, which would be four hundred dollars if it doesn't open in April, the final six hundred is forfeited immediately. It's the way it's written.
Without the opportunity to cure or anything else.
He, he voluntarily gives up that, another six hundred dollars.
So if we were to pa, if we would have passed this, or we pass it in the future, we're gonna guarantee a hundred dollars a month. If he fails to complete in April, we'll, we'll get his thousand dollars and we don't have to go through the rigmarole of six days to cure or anything else.
That's the way, my understanding of what Mr. Man is writing is.
May I interject? If this vote, the vote that we just had, had been made on a first and second reading, it would have passed.
Right, well...
The only reason it did not pass is because this was considered as a piece of emergency legislation.
Now, the question becomes, if there's a second reading on January third, that doesn't take effect until February third, what are we gonna do in the meantime? And do I declare him in default on December thirty-first and then clean it up later? And then he has time to cure under the default. This, this muddies the waters a little bit. I just want to make sure I understand what I'm supposed to be doing.
Folks, given the magnitude of this project and how much money is involved and everything, and we're talking about a few hundred dollars, it strikes me that, uh, it's more important that this project move forward than we collect six hundred dollars from, out of this project. And I'd ask you to reconsider your vote and move this thing forward tonight.
Well, also, with the emails, uh, we did discuss some of this and saw this coming here tonight. And there was communication back and forth. And, um, the majority of the people, the, the three that, um, that I reviewed, agreed on two fifty. That two fifty would be appropriate.
I, I don't remember, I saw your email on the two fifty and I saw Mr. Bohannon's on...
So, let me understand correctly, you, Mr., I'm sorry, we've been told that this is the deal that he's willing to accept. So, uh, what I'm hearing from you is that you're willing to give up this project, entertain a lot of litigation over seventy thousand dollars that's already been spent in exchange for six hundred dollars? That doesn't make sense to me.
No, no one's willing to give up the building. We didn't say that. So what we're saying is, do we stick to the contract that says December thirty-first is the deadline? And so if he exceeds the deadline, then there's a certain penalty, you know, that, that occurs. That, we're, that's what we're talking about. Talking about the contract.
And, and let's talk about the contract. As he pointed out, the city was in default before we got very far down the road. We didn't deliver a deed when we were supposed to deliver a deed.
We don't know anything about that. The council didn't know about that.
But he just told us that and Mr. Atkins, you agreed that that was the case?
I, I don't have it, I believe that. I, I have no reason to disbelieve what he said.
Right, so, so that's the way things work sometimes with contracts. Things don't happen on time.
Well, we, we have to have some, some trust in our administration to do things we direct. And timing is certainly, I don't know if we made that, that it was super critical, but it can certainly affect some, uh, different things. I don't think we need to necessarily beat up Mr. Atkins over that. Nor do we need to get the council body, need to worry about the detailed operations of the city. I mean, the charter's pretty clear that we should be remain outside that and leave that to Mr. Atkins. And we hold him accountable if it's...
Mr. S, excuse me. Based on what he just said, and we, this whole deal came together in what, March for us?
Yeah, I believe that.
Okay. And he didn't get his deed until May?
I, I can't hear it.
He didn't get his deed until May?
I, I don't have any...
When did you get your deed?
I, I have no reason to...
May twenty-seventh, okay. So that only leaves him seven months to get the project. Okay, not knowing that fact, I can see that there's no way you can get that building done in that amount of time. Okay? I assumed that when we had our agreement and thirty days went by, everything was gonna go through, like we always talk about at emergency section, that he would get his deed and have nine months to work on the project.
Again, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we give you permission while we were getting the deed together to enter the building and, and do whatever you needed to for repairs? I went in and repaired the roof, the wall to stop further deterioration. And to remove things? And I thought we had signed a little one-page something that said while we're getting this together, you have access to the building to do what you need to do. Do I not remember right? I, I think it was just to repair that roof, but I, I'd have to go back. I don't have that in my file, but... We didn't start work on it until after we had the...
If, if the goal here tonight is to collect a thousand dollars to keep this moving forward, I will do this. I will pay the thousand dollars personally and get this project moving forward. I'll invest my thousand dollars in Mr., in Liberty Spirits to move it forward.
That make, that make...
The city will have a thousand dollars.
My, my, my whole thing here is, I've, I've got no problem saying yes to this whole thing, knowing the whole facts, that he only had seven months to get this thing to this, this timeframe versus the nine months that we were talking about when we passed it.
And I...
So, therein lies...
But I, I still don't have, I, I have no reason to disbelieve Mr. Robinett, but I did not know that before we got here on the floor. I can check with law and see if, if that, I have no reason to disbelieve him.
I mean, I know construction and I know how long things take to work and so I...
I was not aware of that when I was bringing these, you know, these different emails and information to you.
Right.
I was not.
Well, based on that fact, if that is a, a true fact, that he did not get to start actual working on the project until mid, mid-May, probably June first, if you will, then that's only gonna give him six months to get a lot, get a four walls into a structure that can be usable. So at that point, I would have to say that I would agree to just move forward with what we've got going on.
With the current amendment?
The current...
So you're changing your vote then?
I would change my vote if we had it again, based on the facts that we've just been presented.
Again, I've not verified the deed. I have no reason to disbelieve Mr. Robinett, but I've not checked any of that out. And so I, I can't tell you for a fact... I've got the deed. The stamp deed that shows what was recorded, if you were to look at it. That probably answers our question then.
Sir, what is our procedure?
It was recorded May the twenty-sixth at two fifty in the afternoon.
All right. Did we execute, is there a time on there that, a date that we executed?
It was executed May the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
So he didn't really take possession until June first?
Right.
There is documentation for that, yes, Mr. Mulligan.
So can we take this up again to, um...
That's one question to the staff attorney.
We've had others.
What is our, what is our course of action?
I noted it down. What do they have to do to pick it back up again? Do we sign a new number to it? Do it again?
I would think so, yes. That would be the best bet, to make sure that it's completely clean.
So we're at seventy-nine, so, um, I'm gonna change that to eighty?
Eighty, make it eighty.
Uh, eighty? Yeah, the rest are... So eighty.
Well, wait, yeah, I'm sorry.
Because we can't consider the same number twice, I guess, is the, is the key, so...
We may also need, just to make sure we're being very thorough, since it would be considered an emergency.
Read, add that on the emergency leg, so we'll need to waive the charter provision then, so, okay.
You could do that now, waive the charter provision?
Do that and then we'll take up the ordinance.
And then consider the, the item?
Okay. I make a motion to waive the charter. That requires two readings on two separate pages for ordinance two oh one six dash eighty. Declare this an emergency measure to be read one time only.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gank, would you call the roll?
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ordinance number oh twenty sixteen dash eighty would be an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an amendment to the development agreement between the city and Liberty Spirits LLC for the sale of city-owned property located at thirteen sixteen Vale Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I apologize to council for the confusion.
Yeah, good to know.
Next up is resolution number R twenty sixteen dash fifty-five, a resolution authorizing a transfer from the general fund to the employee benefits fund as an advance subject to reimbursement and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a motion to adopt? Still moved? Second. Mr. Atkins, I need Mr. Terliger.
Now, this, this is a, uh, two-step process. The first one, the general fund now moves the money from the general fund to the employee benefits fund. The next one will actually authorize us to, uh, supplementally appropriate those, allow us to spend those on, out of the employee benefits.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Atkins on this?
If I may, and I don't mean to drag this meeting into, but I'm concerned. This four hundred thousand dollar claim that we're fighting, i- if we're successful on that, who's gonna pay us four hundred thousand dollars back? I'm assuming it's already been spent on the care of this individual.
My understanding is Anthem will be required to pay us back for that because they, they authorized it inappropriately.
All right, thank you. Um, in addition to that, with most of our employees being under contract, I'm assuming we're not in a position to increase the amount that they have to pay in terms of premiums?
There's, there are caps in the collective bargaining agreements that will, that will, that we, we are at. Are we at those right now, right?
Yes, in our highest tier healthcare solutions, they're at the caps.
Well, what about lower tiers?
So they're not, but at that point, from what our EBI or third-party broker said, if you increase those second-tier plans up to the caps as well, then obviously you have no incentive to choose those lower caps.
Lower plans.
Same cost for both plans, which hurts, hurts the healthcare program overall.
I would ask council to consider passing this tonight. And I'm happy to, to have further discussion about if you want a faster payback, if you want to look at other options. We're, we're certainly open. This is the most balanced way I could come up with to try to get us back headed in the right direction without curtailing operations. If this is not acceptable to council, after, after this part, this part, I don't think I have a whole lot of choice. Um, I'm happy to look at, at, you know, again, but we're probably getting into people at that point if we want to go faster.
I'm willing to support this measure tonight. I am just very concerned about the direction this is headed. You're to be commended for what you've trying, what you're trying to do. I think we need to have further discussion early next year about how we might speed this up a little.
I agree.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest maybe...
We'll do our very best.
Maybe an update from EBI and, uh, understand kind of where our plan fits within the schema of other public plans, as well as, you know, what the employee share is, what the employer share is, um, because, again, I know it's a little different in the public sector, but I think in the private sector, we all seen increases in the increased burden, especially if you're a standalone payer, increase in the, what the employee share is paying for the, uh, overall plans and tweaking that. So, um, and to Mr. Picard's point, it does take a little while to move some of these with our labor contracts, but as long as we have a clear understanding of that, that would be helpful.
I will see what I can line up for. So maybe the second meeting may take a little time to put that together, but I will absolutely talk to EBI about doing that.
Any other discussion or comments on that? With that, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Bronston?
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty sixteen dash fifty-six, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio, for the period ending December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, and declaring an emergency. This is the second part in regards to the employee benefits fund.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty sixteen dash fifty-seven, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio, for the period ending December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, and declaring an emergency. This is in regards to the general fund.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Your honor, this is a net zero cleanup for the end of the year. Forty-three thousand dollars being de-appropriated from the, uh, non-departmental accounts. Ten thousand being, uh, added on to criminal investigation. Twenty-five thousand for police dispatch and overtime wages, uh, and eight thousand for parks maintenance to clean up the year. Uh, we have incurred extra police costs, especially with a couple of unsolved murders and things. We've spent a little more than we had hoped to, but, uh, this cleans it up at a net zero, uh, to the general fund.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Miffian?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty sixteen dash fifty-eight, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio, for the period ending December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, and declaring an emergency. This is in regards to the nuisance and general fund.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Sorry. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, your honor, this cleans up the, uh, resolution that you had appealed earlier this evening. Uh, this puts a hundred and fifty thousand dollars back out of nuisance abatement back into the general fund, which allows us to send six hundred and fifty thousand dollars back to the general fund. Uh, you've incorporated that into the demolition of your twenty seventeen budget already, so it will slide over and then in seventeen, slide back where it needs to go to balance out that grant. Uh, this also cleans up the million and forty thousand five hundred dollars. Instead of having, uh, two million dollars to the wrong, it puts them back to zero, which is where we need to be at the end of the year. And I apologize for the clerical error.
Any questions, Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
No, any questions, sorry?
I'm sorry.
All right, these microphones, we gotta get used to this. All right, uh, here, then, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
For our last one of the year.
Resolution number R twenty sixteen dash fifty-nine, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio, for the period ending December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. This is in regards to the general fund, it is just a first reading and no action is needed this evening.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes, your honor, we had originally budgeted eighty-six thousand dollars for the heroin summit program expenses, we have spent some of that. We are going to ask that the rest of it lapses, we're at the last meeting of the year. We do have twenty-five thousand in the budget for next year, we are asking that you supplement, and it'd be, excuse me, another thirty thousand that's already sitting in that account after it lapses, so that we can spend fifty-five thousand out of that fund for next year for our heroin summit programs.
Any questions, Mr. Atkins? Thank you. That, we're finished with our agenda for the year, thank you all very much, we'll see everyone in these chambers on January third, two thousand and seventeen, thank you all, have a good evening.
Thank you, your honor.